Now it's not.
It should.
We'll zoom back out to you.
Good.
Yeah, that's better. I'm going to call a meeting. Regular tri-weekly meeting of the Dyton Board of Assessors to Order, 9:09 a.m., November 9th, 2022. This meeting is being audio and video recorded for future playback. On website, YouTube. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attendance. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Goulart. Absent is Mr. East today. Also present is Mrs. Schechner, our full-time assessor. Okay. Agenda item four. A old business, Stonegate Landing. I checked with the tax collector and there has been no payments on Stonegate Landing of the sum forty-two-plus thousand dollars in back taxes. And I'm, I don't know if he paid the ones he said he currently owns, the two lots. But the reason this is on here, I'm wondering if we should advise or suggest or something to the tax collector that they start proceedings for, take, it goes back over three years. And if he should start looking into tax title. I mean, it, we've certainly had enough, we, the town has certainly had enough discussions. And the last information from Mr. Fedorov was a series of emails that we were copied on and he was telling Attorney Rossi, the attorney for ABLE Realty, that he only owed two lots, two thousand and some odd dollars, but it was their responsibility to pay the forty-two thousand plus.
They who?
The ABLE, he's telling ABLE Realty, they should pay it. Again, the owner of record is Stonegate, so I'm wondering if, if we should contact the tax collector about starting proceedings for tax title. That may get somebody's attention and maybe they'd make a payment. But the other thing, we had gotten some information that came in again. I don't know why this was sent to us and referenced in emails from Mr. Fedorov. But there was action taken, a writ of execution on money judgment. Do you have this correct?
Yeah, I don't have it here, but I.
All right.
Same thing.
Yes. So at the zoning board meeting, I had these documents and I told the zoning board that as far as we are concerned, all our work's done. However, we were copied on this information and so I left a copy with them, with Mr. East today. Because it appears to be some kind of a judgment.
So I'm looking this over now. What did this judgment form? I mean, obviously it's against ABLE Realty.
Right, and this shows all the lots that.
His name Courtney Powell, estate of Chase.
Go to the next one, the next page, the sheriff's order. And he's referencing the lots.
Yep.
And if you notice going down.
It just looks like a D.
This is the.
A plaintiff and his person, state defendant.
So.
And then, but this here just looks like a D.
But in one of these emails from Mr. Federer, he's telling Attorney Rossi, ABLE Realty, that there is another outstanding document, a judgment for over sixty thousand dollars.
That's what this is.
That has never been relieved and it should be relieved. And again.
Twenty twenty-one.
Exactly. It's evidently, it hasn't been relieved, meaning it's still on, at the Registry of Deeds. So I got this document from the Registry of Deeds because the reference in the email was the wrong book and page. So I went to the registry and got copies of this. Again, I'm giving this to you for informational purposes. But I'm, so, so what I'm wondering is, should we talk to the tax collector about, or just ask if there are plans to?
So my, my feeling on it is it's not within our purview, as far as I know, is deciding what goes into tax title or not, but there's certainly no issue with us talking to the collector and letting him know that this is an issue and have him look into it.
Yeah.
But it's not our responsibility.
No, it isn't.
I'm not sure what the timeframe is when they, when they do tax title. I don't know if it's, you know, what the timeframe is. They're one year behind, two years behind. I don't, I don't know, so.
Again, I don't even know why we got this.
I think I was, it was my name on it and it seemed like it was reply all, I was getting.
And it was.
Maybe.
So we.
We're the central communications hub.
So it may have, it may be that Mr. Federer is saying, hey, Board of Assessors, Town of Dyton and everybody else in the town that's involved in this. This is a different circumstance here. I'm not responsible for this and I'm only responsible for the two lots that I have and which means nothing to us.
Means nothing to us. The only thing that matters is that we have correctly said, these are the assessments for these properties. They haven't been paid. Forgive me, I'm still on vacation.
Over three years.
But my recollection is that the, the motion they had or the process they had started, they they pulled out, right?
I think they.
Yeah, so there's nothing before, but there's nothing before the town right now, correct?
No.
So as far as we know, we're doing nothing and nothing's going to happen until, this has nothing to do with us as a town. But the, certainly the outstanding taxes do. Those taxes need to be paid before anything goes forward and I should feel aware of that.
And because they withdrew without prejudice and it was not, they didn't even open it, never mind continuing. They've got to start over again with public hearings and everything. So I'm just, so, so what I'm asking is, should we authorize or ask Mrs. Schechner to get in touch with tax collector? And just ask, is this, I guess, ask if it's something go ahead for tax title.
Just ask Mr. Reynolds to look into it.
Yeah. And, and if he doesn't have these documents, I know you've got the emails and that. Share whatever. Just so.
Aren't they, aren't they aware of the, I mean, they helped develop the, that packet of forty-some thousand dollars, right? So they should be aware of it.
Yeah, so the only question with all of this is, again, record owner is Stonegate. Better off is saying, I don't owe that money. It's the responsibility of ABLE, but, and I'm, and so the question is, did he pay his own taxes that would do the first of November? Just informational purposes, but.
Let me, let me ask a question there, though. Have we ever, in our research, who was the owner of record? So Mr. Federer can say, it's not my responsibility, all he wants, but the matter is, who is, if it's in his name,
Stonegate.
Then it's his problem.
I'm sure they are still discussing. You know, I sold this to you. I still have your money. You're really going to owe this. It's in my name. I'm sure that's.
I think we had this discussion before that like whenever.
When they came in here, we made it clear when they, when Mr. Federer, Mr. Cussum.
Yep.
We made it clear. The only name we recognize is Stonegate Landing.
Yeah, we'll see. That's it.
ABLE and all this other stuff.
But to sell it back for the dollar because he couldn't actually sell the property to them.
But what matters is, and I think I've said this at previous meeting, who is the owner of record as of January 1st? And whenever I've gone to a closing, any competent closing attorney is going to correctly assess, you know, prorate the taxes and it's going to be part of the closing document that the purchaser has to pay the seller a certain amount of money for those taxes. Because as far as the town is concerned, we only care about who is January 1st. We don't keep track of, you know, half season, quarter season, whatever, it's just full year. So as far as we're concerned and as far as the collector is concerned, it's Mr. Federer. If he has an issue with ABLE Realty, that's his issue to take up in court.
Okay, so Mrs. Schecht, if you could look into that and just send us an email, let us know what you found out. If any more documents come through or do you have, do you have all, you must have all the emails that were going back and forth? If you could forward them to Bill, just so he understands what, what Mr. Federer was sending out and again, it was like, what, why are we being told this? What has this got to do with anything? But because we couldn't look it up, that's when I stopped at the registry and asked for this document and, and.
Except for other than notifying the collector, there's nothing should be done on this, correct?
No, we just want to be in the loop for informational purposes. Moving on, agenda item five A. Do we have any invoices?
We have one for WB Mason. Some ink, ink's expensive, so, but it should last a while. You guys have to sign the invoice and the cover sheet.
This is for color inkjet or something like that?
Yes, we have, our, in our printer, popper printer broke. It's like twenty something years old. So I got one from Mike and I brought one from home instead of us spending. It was the end of last year's budget, so we didn't have like, so we just, I've been using those.
If I may make a recommendation, in the future, if we're going to buy something new, laser, color, color lasers are far more economical than.
Okay, yeah, I'd probably run it by you guys.
You know, for budget prep, it may be a good idea to look into getting a printer. You shouldn't have to bring your own from home. I understand you.
It was just that I had, I had the ink already, so it was.
And all I'm saying is look into it. Because the one you got from Mike, we don't know how old it is.
It's gone.
That's good. That's fine.
Have you ever used a color laser though?
I don't know.
They print as fast as a copy.
Yeah, I want. Yeah, maybe you could flip that information up.
No, well, no, actually, I would tell you, I use Brother.
Yeah.
Brother laser printers, I think they usually cost like in hundreds of dollars.
Yeah.
And then you can just like refuel, fill the toner by, you know, generic toner, pretty cheap. I move that we pay the bill for WB Mason for miscellaneous supplies in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty cents.
And I'll step down and second any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Agenda item five B, sign motor vehicle abatements, if any.
Don't have any. I just have kept it on there.
Okay.
Are you on both signs, correct, with the bill?
Yes, yeah.
Agenda item five C, sign payroll.
There's no payroll either.
Yeah, I expect to get paid.
Yeah. Next time.
Agenda item five D, sign chapter land liens, Benny.
Yep, so that this lien is being released and re-recorded because the person has changed into a trust. So to keep everything. Yeah.
I assume we're going to get a change one.
On there and then the, the one behind it, it has the new name on it. So it's just.
Oh, so this is really, so this.
Release and the recording, yeah.
Okay, this is forest land, forty acres.
Yes.
Who's, who's the property owner?
Michael and Lorraine Rosa. And okay, I make a motion that we sign a release of forest land for Michael and Lorraine Rosa and also sign at the same time a classification of the same property, the forty acres, over to eighteen sixty-five William Street Revocable Trust care of Michael and Lorraine, look, Michael and Lorraine Rosa.
I'll step down, second any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Agenda item five E.
Obviously, there's a few more chapter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Well, it was actually, well, actually, this is the chapter land that needs to be signed for that twenty-four-ten Cedar Street. The one that we were trying to keep on track so they could do that closing. But they've already paid in the meantime, so this is just the official, the rollback amount.
This is the amount you said you didn't have, he, at the time you said you didn't have.
Right. Then they've already, they handed it in. So we have a warrant and a commitment for it, which that's E.
It's just.
It's just, they already had it, but it didn't have your, yes, but they didn't have the signatures on it. But they.
He said they already paid it?
Yeah.
I move that we sign the rollback tax in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and four cents for Cedar View Realty Trust.
A second, I'll step down a second. What is that? Are we on five E? Are we still on five D? You said there was.
You're still on D because it's another, with rollback. I didn't break it out as.
No, we are on five E. This is, this is five E. And the amount in your, the
Okay.
Minutes is not the same as the amount on the.
So what's the correct number?
I assume it's this.
The list, I think. Even nine.
It's actually the six dollars comes off, the six dollars doesn't get committed. It's a very strange thing. I don't. So this will be six dollars less. So this, this is a commitment that's here, a warrant and a commitment. So this is actually like a separate thing. I didn't put it on there, but it's part of the signing of the liens and the chapter.
So what is the correct number for five?
Nine sixty.
So nine sixty is the correct number because E is actually this paper, not that paper. Because the six dollars comes off.
So it says.
That is the rollback. They've already paid it, but I didn't have it ready for you guys to sign. So it's the total with that six dollars in it. But then we don't commit that six dollars. It's some sort of like fee that goes to, I think, the collector or something with it. That is just signing here. So this is what they owe for the rollback.
Okay, it just for my education, because
Yep, so.
I understand, so this goes smoother in the future.
Yeah.
What is the difference between this document and this?
This is the rollback tax that they owe. This one is them, it being committed to our records on the collector side. Because they paid it already.
So this is what we would normally sign. This is normally being done in two different meetings.
Yes.
So we would say, this is what you owe and this is, oh, this is what they paid.
Right, but because they were trying to get the closing done and.
Did it quickly.
Yes, so.
But it's very confusing that that six dollars is.
I know.
That's why when you read, when you read it and I'm looking at this, I'm saying, what, wait a minute, where, what item?
Don't even put the dollar amount. I just, but I did because.
So do these documents have different names? So this is because.
That's the rollback tax.
This is a rollback tax.
And this is a, this is a, this is the warrant and this is commitment to put that on the books.
Okay, so I motion that we.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we've got a motion and a.
We do?
Yeah, and second, we were in discuss.
That's right.
So my question is, should we be talking about five D and then go to five E?
That's what she said.
Yeah.
She said this was five D. I said.
Because it's still another chapter related. It's not the warrant and commitment. It's another chapter.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my second. You withdraw your motion and then you can make a new motion.
New motion. I make a motion that we sign the rollback tax in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and four cents.
Step down and second. This is five E.
This is five D.
D, this is still D.
Still D, we're going to do five in a moment.
Okay, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote. Okay, agenda item five E. The rollback tax warrant commitment. Okay.
Yep, so this is committing it to the books.
Understood.
And that six dollars is.
So I move that we sign the warrant and commitment in the amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars and four cents.
And I'll step. Sorry.
Cedar View Realty Trust.
And I will step down a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, motion carries unanimously. Agenda item five F, MMA Legislative Breakfast Meeting. So on October the twenty-eighth, I attended the MMA Legislative Breakfast that they had in this region. It was at Stonehill College. The reason I asked it this beyond here is because Senator Michael Brady, Second Plymouth and Bristol Districts, when he was called upon to talk about updates or whatever he wanted to give us. He talked about Brockton still having a need for water. And they're still trying to buy, or the plan is to buy Aquaria. Because in addition to Brockton, when that water line was put into Brockton from Dyton, Mansfield, Norton and some other communities were saying, we get water shortages too. We want to be able to get water. So that never happened.
I'm surprised already. I'm amazed. There's actually a water line that goes all the way from Dyton to Brockton.
Yeah, if you're, if you're up the way, if you're on one thirty-eight and you come to Fifth Street and you turn, that's the one that goes down where all the, where FB Rogers was, now there's a park. Okay. When you go under the railroad bridge, look up, you'll see a big silver pipeline. So in places it's above ground and other places it's underground. Okay? So.
Is it currently in use?
Yes, yes. They were, they said initially it was to satisfy Brockton's need and then there was the story that they started working on water lines in the city and fixed a lot of leaks and that solved some of the water problems. Well, evidently it hasn't because.
Brockton.
Yes, the need according to this senator is Brockton needs water because I think it primarily gets water from Silver Lake and others do and it's like everyone's facing the same thing except Somerset. But anyhow, again, they've been talking about buying Aquaria outright, the city of Brockton. So it would meet their needs and they could sell water to Mansfield, Norton and anybody else along the line that wants to buy water. So when I spoke up, I said, I said that, that information about Brockton, I said, that's been around a long time. I said, I told him, I said, I'm an assessor in the town of Dyton and I believe Aquaria might be our second highest taxpayer. But I said, the, when it wasn't, when it was built, it was going to supply other communities. So I said, I, I hope if in fact you do buy it, you meaning Brockton, you do sell to Norton in Mansfield because that's going to make it continually taxable because you're selling a product and making a profit. He said, that's right. So I don't know where this is going. Every now and then it comes up and this is the first thing I heard about it since. Well, Carol has told me it off and on it because it comes up and then it goes down, whatever.
A few months, I think we get a call from some Brockton to ask what the value is, different, are different quarters they'll call. So I think we got, we got a call maybe a couple of months ago.
Evidently, they're running twenty-four seven because I saw a help wanted sign for the third shift. And which I was surprised because I had thought they only, they get a call, you know, send us some water or release whatever you do, but anyhow, I just wanted to let you know that according to this Senator Brady, and I, and I'm sure they're also looking for funds to help Brockton solve the problem, you know, whether they're grants or anything else, but it's just something that periodically will come up and I wanted you guys to be aware of what I heard at the meeting. The rest of it deals with the increase in the Community Preservation Act, increases in Chapter seventy, ninety, Circuit Break, regional transportation. There was one interesting thing and it was a senator, I think his district was out like Whitman, Hanson, Quincy, somewhere out that direction. His main presentation was about Zoom meetings and he thinks it's about time that the law gets changed because his feelings are too many members of the House and Senate are zooming in instead of showing up. And he says that was fine during the pandemic, but we should all be meeting together again because you, you get to discuss things, you get to talk about things, which you don't have that camaraderie with a Zoom meeting. So, but I just mentioned that because I was surprised to hear it, that, you know, in other words, it's time to show up for work. So whatever that's worth, but anyhow.
General feeling these days.
So that's what that legislative thing was. So we'll just, we'll just make a note in the minutes that there is discussion again about Brockton buying Aquaria. And, oh, Carol did tell us in the agreement that allowed them to build that, it was also in it. It states something like if the plant is sold to a community, the taxes will still be paid for, and I think it's at least twenty years. So they just couldn't build it and then sell it and Brockton says, we're taxing that.
Right.
So, but there is wording like that in there, but I was glad to hear they're talking. If they do it, they're talking about helping other communities because that continues the taxability of it for us. So is there any public input? Well, the public, no public input. Correspondence. I emailed out the report that I read at town meeting.
I don't think.
Someone, it's there somewhere. But Eric wasn't at the meeting and, but Kerry had, Stephanie told me ahead of time, he's not going to be there. So I just wrote something up quickly and.
Looks about right.
General. So we can just.
Thank you, Nancy.
Oh, you're welcome. We, we can go in the
With the minutes.
Yeah, and so we have, you know, on file.
Need it signed because the name's at the bottom like that or?
No, no.
In the minutes.
Let's say discussion, it's a long discussion.
Chapter.
Have we heard anything more about ten fifty William Street?
No.
Um, because they were supposed to let us know when they reclassified.
That's, that's Reed, right?
Yes.
There is going to be more discussion at the pact meeting on the fifteenth, which now I'm part of. So I should be able to report. Um, so I should be able to report.
Okay.
Back with information. Jim stopped by yesterday to make sure I was gonna be at the meeting and he discussed a little bit, but um. I'll know more on the fifteenth. That's ten to twelve. Invitation only, no, I'm just joking, I don't know.
And what is the, what is?
This is um myself and the fire chief, it's about permitting and things.
Oh.
Something that they feel because the board of health, he can, he gets into places that would help us with um, you know, additional bathrooms, bedrooms, different things that, that he sees. So we're gonna have a discussion. I can, uh. I'll bring our report back next meeting. Good.
Okay, um, I move that we accept the uh meetings of October nineteenth as presented.
Step down in second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, um. That's done. Nine, unanticipated items. You just reminded me of something. Uh, last week. Um, I received an email from a data analyst at Grasshopper about the Brook Street Solar Project. And the gist of his message was, when is the town going to refund the um maintenance bond, the maintenance bond.
Oh, bond, okay.
The um permit fees and so forth and so on. He had five items, but he combined two, that was number three. And then he broke it out for four and five. So the first two, um, I referred him to the planning board. I said, those are planning board fees and um, so the stormwater committee wouldn't be involved. He was asking me this as a, I, I'm sure him. Uh, Mr. Hafiz says, send it to Nancy, she'll get it to the right people. So when I looked at what he had sent, I wrote back and said the two you combined as number three are really numbers four and five. So number one, permanent permit fees are not refundable. Uh. And then I told him exactly what they were for. One, they, they were either deposits or they're bonds that we require for in that particular case, uh, maintenance of the culvert for the life of the project. And the other one was for maintenance of the drainage basins, if they ever get them working. Um. Then I said, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but we are in the process of putting together a pilot agreement. Payment in lieu of taxes. Uh, it's on hold until we see how things work out down there and if they get these basins working. I said, but in that uh agreement, there is a five thousand dollar fee that is non-refundable. And it's to offset the cost the town has in putting a pilot agreement together from legal expenses and recording and and what goes on in the town to get this done. Um, then I told him, uh, there is, uh, there will be additional fees. Um, and you can check with Mrs. Easterday on what that's about. But the bond or the deposit for maintenance will be refunded if during the life of the solar farm. The culvert and the basins are maintained according to the agreement that we have. If you don't maintain them or whoever owns it, if they sell it, whoever owns it doesn't maintain it. The town will take that money and will do the maintenance. They will notify the owner, by the way, we need money back.
For forever, right?
There's no. Well, if it's twenty years on the solar farm, it's twenty.
Twenty years, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, if they sell it, it transfers, okay? But the main point was keep it maintained and you'll get your money back sometime.
In twenty years, yeah.
Um, and I, oh, I mentioned, there is a decommissioning bond that is going to be substantial. That will be determined by the planning board because of battery uh, storage. By the way, the uh complete new section that relates to battery storage. Solar farms was approved at town meeting. So um, I told them that they could uh reference that online or get in touch with Mrs. Easterday. But uh, I said, be prepared because there will be another bond. It will be substantial. And it will be related to the project, but um, I don't know what the amount would be. On a solar farm that doesn't have batteries. Uh, the maintenance bond slash decommissioning bond might be fifty thousand, but because of battery storage and everything related to it, I'm sure this is gonna be substantial. And I said, again, this will be a deposit or a bond. And if everything is complied with, then, and the, when the project ends and you decommission it and take all your stuff out of there, it can be refunded, but um. I, I, I asked him why he was asking the questions twice, and I finally got an answer that um uh, trying to determine like what fees are coming back and whatever. And I'm thinking, you're not gonna see money from us for at least twenty, if it's, it's a, the pilot is proposed to be twenty years.
Interesting that you said permit, though. Why would they expect money back from a permit?
Well, quite frankly, I don't, the, this man, I have not dealt with him. Um, and when I, I noticed that Ahmed Hafiz, who is the contact person that I deal with, he's copied on everything and um my initial thought was, he's never seen anything like this and he thinks that uh, we're gonna get the money back or it may, that he may have been told, you know, after the project, this, that, and the other. We'll get money back, but again, it's all based on them doing what will be in those agreements.
Any bond is for like assuring that you're going to do a certain thing. And the things you're talking about is twenty years from now, so therefore you have to hold it for twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
There are the bonds that might be, you know, make sure you complete the project, that often happens. You know, you start the project, you know, like uh, I, I was involved with the thing with the cul-de-sac. And uh, you know, you gotta put up the money to say, you know, if I don't finish the cul-de-sac, here's the money to finish it.
Mm-hmm, so um, I just mentioned this because it came out of the blue. And um, I did mention the pilot agreement and uh, the last conversation email I had with Saffiz, and there's somebody new working on that too, but I just direct my comments to him because I'm not gonna deal with all these people that are not familiar with it. Um, and I said to him, pilot agreement is not going to the town meeting in November. We're nowhere near getting that thing online. We can, we can discuss a pilot agreement at any time and get it approved, and it doesn't have to be twenty years if the uh, we have one that's for fifteen years because they went online, they did everything, got online, then they said, oh, can we get a pilot agreement? So we said, yeah, fifteen years, all right? Um, because the expected life is twenty years unless they decide to renew, so. Um, but I could not understand why anyone would think a permit fee would be refundable. I mean, if you got right to the point of saying, we're gonna build, we're gonna build, oh, stop everything, we're not gonna do it. Well, then we'll refund the permit because nothing's born anywhere, but I said to him, I, I still wanna know why are you asking the question on a project that's under construction and reconstruction? So um, has anything come through our office for the sale of the woodlot that they bought the land?
No.
Okay, so that's uh, they bought the land to the west so they could clear cut a sufficient amount to separate the woods from the batteries.
And they need like, was it two hundred?
So.
That was, that was part of the new uh ordinance, right?
Mm-hmm.
By law, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, um.
Yeah, because Mike just asked us the same thing yesterday and Kerry and I, neither of us have heard anything more from that conversation that.
So, um. Maybe they're, maybe they're trying to determine damages for a lawsuit. They do have a new contractor in place. I haven't been down there lately. Um, Jim and Todd have been there. I think Tommy has been there. Um, but uh, when I was there with Todd um, back in October, um, they had dug up the two basins. They had uh piles of rotting um, stumps uh, that stunk to high heaven, and they had boulders like you wouldn't believe because in addition to burying all those ground stumps. They must have really dug a big hole because they put boulders down there. So this basin was never gonna drain, but anyhow.
So.
We're moving ahead, that's moving ahead stormwater wise, but um, I just wanted you to be aware that um other than that he's a data analyst and his questions didn't make a lot of sense to me. I did answer them, um. And uh, I can forward those to you, just so you know, see the conversations that went on. But, but that's, uh, I happened to think of that when you were talking, but um. So, anything else, any other unanticipated items, questions?
Um, we just received um, our annual, it's like a holiday meeting. It's really like, we call it the Christmas party where we eat and we have um, someone have a speaker. So this is, we just got this um, last week or this week, I think. So it's um, it comes out of the budget for you to go.
So you're saying we can actually go to this?
Yes.
Yeah.
I bet waits, so it's the first of December. If you want your spouse to come, you just pay for them. That's what I usually do with my husband.
Okay, I will.
Well, so that's just, you know, an anticipated just for you to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm planning to go. Last year was my first.
Yeah, but you probably haven't had a chance to look at it.
I went last year and um, the speaker.
Same person.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, Matt, Matt Thomas, I think.
That guy, he's good.
Yeah.
He's good.
Yeah, he's really.
Um, we got into discussions of the uh, at the time, brace yourself because the utilities are gonna whack you with increased uh, rates, uh, especially the natural gas. Um. He talked about the legislation um, that had been filed with the Public Utilities Commission, but we could expect uh, large increases in uh, natural gas. Um. The um, electricity, because we have aggregation. Uh, we're, let's say, protected for a while under that, but that's only for the supply. They can jack up the other fees, but uh, but he, and then he answered questions and that and uh and he surveilled, but he was, he was very good. I found it very informative, uh, in the fact that.
Which works with him a lot.
We could, yeah, we could ask uh, we could ask questions, uh, especially in the case of Dayton that has two different electrical suppliers. Um, obviously, the TMLP is not involved in those kinds of things, but um. And he kept talking about national grid and I said, we have aggregation, so does that protect us? He says, yes. Only for the supply. I said, okay, I said, you said ever source. He says, yes, you have ever source for gas. You're not protected, so, okay, we're getting zonked, but anyhow, those are some of the things we talked about. It was, it was a good night. It was a good night.
Go if you can.
Uh, well, it's a Thursday night, so it probably can't, but I'll. Anything else?
No, not for this meeting.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Step down a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, what time do you have?
It's nine fifty. I think that's what I see it then.